We're going to start recording. Good afternoon, all. CWA and IRCEA are proud to bring you the candidate forum to help you prepare for voting in the upcoming election and understand the individuals who will serve as our elected officials on the school board beginning on November 2020. First, we would like to introduce your sponsors, the CWA and the IRCEA Executive Board, who are bringing this forum to you. I am Jennifer Freeland, President of IRCEA, Indian River County Education Association, and...
And my name is Mike Murray. I am the President of the Communication Workers of America Local 3180, and I would like to introduce our Executive Board. We have Executive Vice President Maureen Weisberg, Secretary Becky Cook, Treasurer Barry Dean, Clerical Area Vice President Beverly Rayford, Maintenance Area Vice President Brian Whiting, Food Service Area Vice President Liz Caldwell, Student Associate Area Vice President Position One is Lourdes Panagos, Student Associate Area Vice President Position Number Two Carolyn Zeme, and Consorting Area Vice President Willie DeBerry.
And the IRCEA Board is Secretary Carla Kundoff, Treasurer Ren Robb, Pre-K5 Director Colotta Murray, 6A Director Dreen Johnson, 912 Director Jerry Goller, Director-at-Large Allison Moody, Non-Classroom Instructional Director Megan Ruggiero, Electoral Director Wiley Green, Minority Director Eddie Flores, and Social Media Coordinator Matt Rallo.
So we'd like to begin with the rules of our forum. Each candidate will have three minutes to introduce themselves and share why they're running for school board. There'll be six questions posed to all candidates, along with one question specific to each individual candidate. We will alternate the order of responses from each candidate, and each candidate will have two minutes to respond to each question. Carla Kundoff will keep time, and signal will play when your time has elapsed. Finally, each candidate will have three minutes to share their final thoughts. Now, we'd like to introduce the candidates and allow them to share their opening statement. First, I would like to introduce Laura Zork, incumbent for seat number three. There you go.
There you go.
Hello.
Hello, thank you.
Hello, School District of Indian River County employees at CWA and teachers. I want to thank Liz Cannon, Jennifer Freeland, Mike Murray for hosting this candidate forum. We've been challenged with unprecedented president at times, but as professionals, you all have overcome the obstacles. Like you, all of you, I think this is a very important, probably one of the most important elections that we have here in our county because our future generation is counting on the leadership that we provide from the school district. I want to say that when I first come on board, we had some tough decisions to make. Within my first two weeks on the board, I had entered into, I had inherited the insurance challenges that we were faced with, with the 32% increase. And ever since then, I've been laser focused on trying to make sure that we look at the best options possible so that we won't have those increases. We know increases with the health insurance is hard to stop that, but we have ways that we can mitigate that. So I've been really focused on that to make sure that we don't have those increases like we had at that time when I first got on the board. And thank goodness, in the three years now, we just had the $5 increase recently. Another area that I had inherited was the desegregation order. That is something that, as a board member, I was committed to, to try to get us on track so that we put the plans and processes in place that we can make sure that we're accountable to all our students and that we have equality and equity for all our students. And hopefully, over the next year, we'll have those systems in place. Another area that, when I first come on board, and I'm sure every one of you are familiar with this, is culture and climate. Culture and climate was in the tanks when I got on the board. That's something that I've been trying to really work on, and I know one of the challenges that I saw was the mismanagement from the top at the district. So within my first 90 days as your board chair, I did ask the superintendent for his resignation because I felt enough was enough, and it was time for a change. Since then, we've hired a dynamic superintendent who has stepped up to the task to be fair and balanced for all our employees. I think he's shown that through his negotiations with the teachers recently. That was probably the quickest contract negotiations that we have had, but that just shows you the mindset's different than where it was in the past. As your board member, I want to continue to build those relationships because I know that you are the center of making our students successful.
Thank you, Ms. Zork. Next, I'd like to introduce Dr. Peggy Jones for a candidate for seat number three.
Hi, everyone. Hope everyone is doing well out there. It certainly is a challenging time for our district, our state, and our country, and I hope you're all staying safe. A very special thank you to everyone, our parents, our students, our teachers. Teachers for that quick turnaround with online instruction and learning. I think everyone did a fabulous job. Before I filed for school board, I went around our county from about August through December and talked with many individuals and many groups. And I really did listen, and I reviewed my notes, and from those notes, I created my three platforms: respecting school board policy, regaining community respect, and also restoring employee trust. If you take a look at my resume or my webpage or anything, you can see I've had a lot of experience at the local, state, and district level. At the local level, from teacher coach dean to principal of three schools. At the district level, Executive Director for Secondary and also Principal Consultant. And then at the state level, working with 800 member schools and student athletes. And I think that experience helps me as a school board candidate. If you look at 100142, about nine pages of the definition of school board responsibilities, I think I could kind of narrow it down to three or four main responsibilities. And they are setting policy, amending policy when needed, setting the budget, amending the budget when needed, and then the hiring and/or dismissing of the superintendent and the school board, and of course, accountability to our taxpayers. I have written policy at the district level and state policy, and I understand our school board policy. I certainly have been part of many evaluation systems, and whether I was a principal evaluating a teacher or a district person evaluating someone at the district office, the evaluation system is a tool, and it's a tool to help people move forward. It's not a gotcha, and it's something that I think that's very, very important for our teachers. When I look at the skill set I think that is needed for a school board to move forward, I see consensus building, I see collaboration, and I see sharing. Now, don't get me wrong, there are five individuals on the school board. No one has any power individually, but there comes a time when there needs to be consensus building so we can move forward as we move into this challenging time in our district and in our country. And I think because of my skill set, I would be an asset to the district. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Jones. I'd like to introduce Mr. Barefoot, running for seat number five.
Thank you, everybody. Appreciate the opportunity. Unlike Dr. Jones and Mrs. Zork, who have long history in the school district and various types of roles, and I congratulate both for the time and effort and dedication they put into trying to create the best possible environment for our teachers, the staff, and our students. I'm a little different than everybody else. I grew up in Ohio, and I'll tell you a little bit about myself because you know both Laura and Peggy, you don't necessarily know me. I grew up in Ohio, went to college, a small school just outside of Boston called Babson College. When I graduated from Babson, joined the Army Reserves, got called up for active duty for a few months. Fortunately, I was put back. Went to work in New York City for Merrill Lynch. I spent 25 years there. I was one of their senior executives responsible for about 80% of their balance sheet, billions of dollars, all the trading, investment banking, or not investment banking, capital markets areas around the world. My first couple of years at Merrill Lynch, I got my MBA in the evening at Tayside University. Lived in Chicago, Cleveland, back in New York, San Francisco during my 25 years there, responsible for various parts of the business and various parts of the country. Retired in 1992 from Merrill Lynch, did some real estate development, took a closed-down indoor tennis center, turned it into a sports arena, went back to Wall Street, Payne-Weber. We acquired Kidder Peabody, ended up selling Payne-Weber to UBS in 2000. Along the way, I joined the Babson College Board of Trustees in 1985 with chairman from 95 to 2001, became president. That in and of itself is an interesting story. Served in that role for seven years. Along the way, I was on the board and treasurer of Kent Place School, which is a K through 12 girls' school in Summit, New Jersey. I served here at St. Edward's for seven years, post-financial crisis, 2009 until 2015 or 16. I currently sit as a trustee of Burn Burton Academy, a 200-year-old public high school in Manchester, Vermont. And now, besides all of those activities, I have sat on and continue to sit on several boards, probably most prominently 11 years as Head of Finance and Audit for Blue Cross Blue Shield Massachusetts in $16 billion enterprise. I'm now Chair of the Audit Committee of a Bank in Boston. I'm the Vice Chairman of Cleveland Clinic Indian River Foundation, previously, obviously, Indian River Medical Center. And so that's, there's a lot of other things I could fill in, but that's sort of an overview.
Thank you, Mr. Barefoot.
Oh, you're quiet.
Go ahead.
Finally, we have Ms. Ayla Kramer, candidate for seat number five, but unfortunately, she was invited, but unfortunately, she's unable to attend tonight.
Thank you, candidates. Now, to the questions. The first set of questions will be for all of you. The legislature has passed a measure in which starting salaries would increase $47,500. Last year, we had over 400 teachers in the district who were earning less than $47,500. What steps would you take to ensure an equitable salary increase for all teachers, including veterans, not just new teachers? Dr. Jones, you would be first for this one.
You're not unmuted there. Good question, Jennifer. I have been studying our budget. I don't know if you know on the webpage, it's about 145 pages. Then I had the opportunity to meet with Mr. Fagan and also Dr. Moore and just ask some general questions regarding our budget. And looking also at the IRCEA, I know that we are below the national average. One thing that Mr. Fagan said he was expecting from the governor by at least June 29th was an extra $4 million, where $3 million would go to increasing teacher salary. I think that is absolutely the key to our success. I think it was in the first five years, 44% of our teachers are leaving. If we don't get a handle on that, to me, our whole base of what teaching and learning is all about and keeping our teachers, then we're going to keep struggling year after year with content for our students. I knew the most important job I had as a principal was to hire the best teacher I could. And in the later years as my principal, when I got a little smarter, I would start concentrating and observing and evaluating those first-year teachers. I know how crucial that was. That's an investment. As I said earlier, any kind of evaluation system should not be a gotcha. It should be, okay, here's where we are, and here's where we need to go. So as far as equitable salary, it would be at the top of my list as far as our great need to keep these teachers in our district. I've said it many times before, the most evidence that we have for student achievement is from that teacher in the classroom, and we cannot lose the teachers that come to us. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Jones. Next would be Mr. Barefoot.
Oh, not muted.
He's still muted. Mr. Barefoot, you need to unmute yourself.
Sorry about that.
That's okay.
Salary compression, which is what this is, it's classic. It exists in every business. It exists in every business that I've been in, and you sort of have to look at what it is or who it is that is being compressed. In this case, you don't have an educational system without teachers. Somebody, and I think it was General Eisenhower way back when, when queried at the Columbia University talk, one of the professors stood up and said, you know, "We are the university," meaning the faculty. I would say that we don't have a school district unless we have teachers. I don't have the answer, but it's a common problem that exists in every business. And the only way that I, in the past, have been able to solve that problem is, first of all, you've got to be totally transparent. And yes, there's a number of teachers below that 47,500, but how about the teacher that's at 48 or 49 that served there for six, seven, eight years, however many? And basically, everybody, let's say you found the money, you get everybody up to the minimum. What do you do for the teacher that's a couple of thousand dollars above that minimum and all of a sudden finds rookies or teachers that have only been there a couple of years creeping up on their level? This is a real problem, and the only way I know to handle it is you've got to really take a hard look at your strategic plan, you've got to take a hard look at your budget, you've got to, and you're going to have to eliminate stuff. There's plenty of things in a $300 million budget. I don't know about plenty of things, but I would guess there are things that are nice to have but not necessary to have. I can tell you, teachers, well compensated and motivated, are necessary to have, otherwise you don't have a school district. So whatever the answer is, it's setting priorities, it's eliminating things that may be important and it may be unfortunate for the folks that have dedicated that, but if it's not the priority that's required in order to get those teachers paid, to get enough money to treat them fairly, and figure out a way to deal with the teachers that are above that minimum, we'll be able to figure that out.
And finally, Ms. Zork. Mrs. Zork, pardon me. Mrs. Zork, you're muted. There you go.
Thank you. That's a very good question. It's something that I've been following over the last year because we have to be ready for when that happens. Even though it's a great opportunity for our new teachers coming on board, we have to make sure that we're up to the challenge of paying a fair and equitable salary to the teachers that we've had in our district for a long time. One thing I think all of you can, I can say comfortably is I'm a bold board member who makes bold decisions, and one of the bold decisions that we have made as a board is that we have asked to go out for a millage so that we can offer a fair, equitable salary to our teachers. So that millage is coming up on the August 18 ballot. Part of that initiative is so that we have the funds, even though we were expecting a downturn in the '21-'22 budget year from the state, we want to be prepared that we are able to pay our teachers a fair salary. And also, what happens with that is because we have those extra funds from the millage, we can also, got to trickle down into our CWA workers so that we can also have some benefits there in paying them a fair wage. We have, as a district with Dr. Moore, we've been looking at areas that maybe in the past it was an investment that we needed, but going forward, these areas or these positions that aren't making the impact that they used to make, we are looking at taking those away and enhancing those areas that need to be enhanced. Currently, we've identified about $3.9 million in savings that won't impact the programs that we have in place, but it will enhance what we...
Thank you. During the COVID-19 crisis, both the CWA and the IRCEA have proven to be invaluable to the district in facilitating a smooth transition to the distance working and returning to protocols. Dr. Moore and his leadership team have included us as stakeholders in the decision-making process. How will you, as a school board member, develop a similar relationship between the unions and the board? Mrs. Zork, can you respond?
Mrs. Zork, I think you're muted.
There you go.
There you go.
I think it's key that we have that collaboration between the, especially the superintendent, because you don't want the board members getting in the weeds of things, but we do need to stay abreast of what's going on. And so I would really support Dr. Moore and his team to make sure that he is a part of getting out there, talking with the individuals, and really learning what the issues are. I think one thing that we learned over the last negotiation session with our teachers is that I think it was Mrs. Cannon that had said, "My first time in five years of being the president of the teachers' union, have we had a superintendent set in on negotiations." That is the type of relationship, as a board member, I want to see our superintendent have, and that's the type of relationship I want him to have, not only with our teachers but also with our CWA. And I know, Mike, we went into a couple of years in our contract, but when it gets to that point, I want him to also have that same relationship in those negotiations with the CWA. I think that just helps develop with our culture and climate, and I think that's critical in showing that our employees, how much they're valued to us. We can't just say it, we have to show it.
Thank you, Ms. Zork. Dr. Jones, could you respond to that?
Sure, thank you. Great question. When I went around and was talking with many members of the community, I had the pleasure of going to one of my CWA meetings, and we were kind of waiting for a forum, so I had the, again, the pleasure to listen to everybody, and I listened very, very carefully. And what I heard from the CWA in general was the following: We want to be part of the team. We want to be part of the solution. We want to make sure that we are doing the best that we can so our students have clean buildings, great transportation, great assistants, cafeteria workers. And the only way I think that we can move forward that model, and I see it with IRCEA and CWA now, is working together. One of the things also as a principal is I would model that. It would always be a team of people approaching a problem: CWA members, IRCEA members, administrators of district. And this has to be collaboration on every aspect. I think the one thing that we all want as our desired outcome are responsible and productive students as they graduate and move on to their next journey. And I believe that just team effort is the only way to do that, especially as we move into some challenging times with COVID-19 and how we're opening our school. And I talked to Dr. Moore a little bit about that when we were on the Code of Conduct meeting today. But again, it's relationship building. I just haven't talked the talk. I've walked the walk, and I've always built collaborative relationships, and I would love to do that as a board member. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Jones. Mr. Barefoot, would you like to respond?
I think, can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, great. You know, this is an interesting question. I'm a product of, you know, the business world. The world that I came from was, I like to call it a command and control environment. You're the boss, this is what we're going to do, and that's sort of the way it is. When I got to Babson, as well as I knew the school, having graduated there, having been on the board, having been the board chair, the one thing I learned very quickly, it's very easy to make decisions, but the process to get to a decision is critical. There's no business in the world like the education business because there's no business that has as many stakeholders, and I apologize for that, that has as many stakeholders as education companies. There's staff, there's faculty, parents, students, governance, in this case, politicians, and we go on and on. If you don't set up a process where the stakeholders that are going to be affected by the topic at hand, the decisions that are about to be made, I guarantee it that the implementation of whatever the decision is will fall short of the objective. So from day one, you've got to identify people that represent the various constituents, the stakeholders, include them in the discussions, hope you reach a consensus. Once in a while, you're not necessarily going to get there, and that's when, in this case, the superintendent, that's what he gets paid for ultimately to make a decision if no consensus can be reached. But 99% of the time, a good process will produce a good outcome, and I would hope that all of the players, and I would also mention, you know, it's interesting, CWA, the custodians and all the folks at the college, I used to say, the people that take care of the grounds and the buildings and the dorm, they're the ones that create a first impression. So when a student walks on a campus and thinking about going to this school or that school, that first impression, you only get one shot...
Thank you, Mr. Barefoot. Sorry. No, it's mine. As you know, the district has been under a desegregation order for the past 52 years, although in recent years, we have made some strides. What is your plan to continue to move the district towards unitarian status? Additionally, in our current climate of civil rights protests, how will you support teachers, staff, students, and community individuals and organizations in expressing any peaceful protests? Mr. Barefoot, you'll be first on this one. You're muted, sir.
Maybe that's just as well because I said, "Thanks a lot." This is really a tough one. I have to tell you that it wasn't until maybe a year ago, and I've been paying attention, reading the paper and all of that, to what's going on in the district and what have you. No, never in my wildest dreams would I have thought in this day and age that anybody would be still under a desegregation order, let alone for 52 years. And to be perfectly honest, I'm still not sure what it's going to take to get there, but let me just give it a shot. First of all, total transparency. It's got to be totally student-focused. The various points of view, the debates, the discussions, at the end of the day, have to benefit the students. But to benefit the students, it has to benefit the teachers. One of the things that was really surprising to me, and I've talked to some folks in the community, in fact, just this morning, it's very hard to recruit teachers of color. There's a lot of competition. Indian River County's not the cheapest place, so you've got cost of living considerations. But we've got to be able to focus on the students, we've got to be able to focus on teachers as being role models. And instead of trying to start at the back of the problem, I always like to think, and it may or may not be relevant here, but where do you want to end up? Start where you want to end up and then work backwards. And for someone like me that maybe doesn't have the command of the details as Mrs. Zork or Dr. Jones, you know, I'm a bit of a disadvantage. On the other hand, I've been in situations in my professional life where...
Mr. Barefoot, I'm going to cut you off again. Thank you so much. Mrs. Zork, you are next.
Yes. I think I'm unmuted, huh?
Yes, you are.
Okay. So since getting on the board, that is one of those opportunities that we've had is to come in. Currently, we're in partial unitary status. We're working diligently to try to get us to full... We're working diligently to try to get us to full unitary status. It's been a long road, but I'm proud of the work that this board has done and our relationship that we have built with NAACP, especially over the last year. It's really blossomed into a nice partnership. We've been able to develop and coordinate our African-American Achievement Committee, who we have two members from the NAACP, we have two members from the district that are represented on that, and then they select who that chairperson is. They tackle, they, part of what Mr. Barefoot was saying is transparency, they really dive into the material. If we're saying that we're here with achievement, they're diving into those numbers and they're holding us accountable, and that's what we need right now. Because right now, what we're doing is we are putting the processes and plans in place so that even if I'm not here, Dr. Moore's not here, that's something that we will maintain going forward. I think it's very critical for us as a school board to make sure that we offer our professional development to our staff, from our CWA workers to our teachers. One thing that Dr. DeBlong is working on right now is a Unity event that she's putting together for the entire community to come together to learn about equity and the bias that our students are under. And right now, and this is perfect timing for us to all be talking about this, it's an important issue. And one thing that we need to do also under this is we really need to own up to our past mistakes. We can't be in a situation...
Mrs. Zork. Thank you. Dr. Jones, would be your turn.
Thank you very much. When I went back to the district for a year in 2017, I served on the African-American Achievement Corps team, and I have been attending the Equity Meetings when we had them before COVID-19. Our achievement plan right now, our African-American Achievement Plan, finally has some good monitoring and data-driven, so I'm very hopeful for that. But if you still look at all the results in third grade, African-American students are behind about 30 points in both math and English. And then if you look at the high school graduation rate, trailing about 10% to 11%. I, as a board member, would not have directed a superintendent to spend $700,000 for unitary status. We had those three components when I was a principal, and they were support staff, they were facilities, and administrative staff. We had those three components. I would have taken a look at the big picture, and what is our main goal here? It's closing the achievement gap. Our goal is that everyone graduates, black, white, Hispanic, at 100% rate. So I think that money would have been better spent in the classroom and with our students, and maybe even helping in our after-school programs. I visited GYAC, Daisy Hope, I volunteer with Crossover Mission. We've got a lot of work to do to get our students to where they need to be. I'm working on a college planning now with some of those boys, but I just think, again, when we look to our taxpayers in our community, let's put the money where it counts. The money should go into the classroom to help these students. As we all know, birth to three, the language development is key. And if you look at the kindergarten readiness rate right now, black students are behind white students. And we've got to close that gap early on, so we're not doing catch-up the whole time. And once we can kind of get that going with third grade, we've always heard, if you're not on grade level by third grade, it's going to be tough. And as a middle and high school principal, I can tell you, it's tough. So let's put the money where it needs to be, let's support our students. I know with the civil rights protests, when my father volunteered for World War II and my husband for Vietnam...
Dr. Jones, I'm afraid I have to cut you off. I'm sorry. Thank you.
Question number four. Many of the discussions within the school district seem to be only including our teachers. Do you know who your support staff employees consist of? How can you, as a board, how can you, as a board member, ensure that your support staff feel valued and supported? Dr. Jones, I'd like you to respond to that.
Whoops, sorry. I think you just have to model what you expect. When you have meetings at schools with student advisory councils and so forth, you bring in support staff, you bring in teachers, you bring in parents. When you have meetings at the district, you bring in support staff, you bring in teachers, you bring in parents. Collaboration is the only way to go. And I like what Mr. Barefoot said earlier, first impression, you know, what does it look like when it comes into a school? What does it feel like? And that goes with our support staff. I will tell you, probably the most professional person I ever have known was my custodian at Gifford Middle School. These are the people that are also mentors and models for our students. So, Mike, I would just say, I would make that a priority. I did as a principal, I did as a district person, I did as a dean. I just think it's important that everyone is heard and we move forward with collaboration.
Thank you, Dr. Jones.
Welcome.
Mr. Barefoot, would you like to respond to that?
Well, as I started to sort of say it, and Dr. Jones just said it, I mean, you know, it's interesting, you walk on a campus, you walk into a school, we have, what, 27 of them? You're going to create a first impression. You walk into that building, you're going to create, you're going to have a first impression. You know, you're a parent, you're taking your son or daughter into middle school from elementary school. Who creates that first impression? It's the people that take care of the grounds, it's the people that keep the hallways clean. Frankly, it's the security, the policeman that stands at the front door now, unfortunately. I know at graduation, Babson College, the first person, the first people, I always think, I gave them credit for the weather, and if the weather wasn't good, it was my fault. And of course, it always got a laugh, but they are so important. And you know, if you have a relationship, one of my best colleagues at Babson was head of the grounds group. I could find out more what was going on in that campus, because they knew, because they were in the dorms, they knew what all the scuttlebutt was, they knew what was the truth and what was a bit exaggerated. They're a great sounding board. I think they're invaluable. And however they're to be included in discussion, certainly school safety and those kinds of things, I mean, you've got to include them. I mean, they're just too important. And I think Dr. Jones just said it, they set a terrific example, hard work, they take pride in their work, they're friendly with the kids, I assume in most cases. And that's with these kids, they're impressionable, they need those kinds of role models. And so I'm a huge fan of support staff employees and would do everything I could to thank them and make sure they get the credit and the recognition they deserve.
Thank you, Mr. Barefoot. Mrs. Zork, would you like to respond to that?
Thank you for that question, Mike. CWA workers are near and dear to my heart. You know, I come from humble upbringings, and my family members were considered blue-collar workers. So I have a heart for our CWA workers. I think one thing is, we need going forward, we need to really take your input, we need to somehow formulate, just like we have a High-Tech Committee, the Health Insurance Advisory Committee. I would really like to see two more committees that should be developed, and one would be for our support staff. Before we roll out implementation into a school or we roll out new policy, I would really like to have that vetting of our, the people that are actually doing the work in the schools and on the ground, to get your input before we roll out our policies. So that's one area that I would like to see going forward, is to develop an advisory committee to us before we implement those things. I have tried, as a board member, to get out there and individually show that I appreciate our support staff. I did put together something last year where I went out and I tried to introduce our support staff to opportunities in taking education. I brought the Indian River State College out so that we could try to look at advancement, because I don't want, if there's any support staff in our district that wants to advance, I want to give them those opportunities to advance, and I want to show them how, what tools are available to them to help them advance. So I truly value all our support staff. I know that you are the heartbeat behind the success, you are unsung heroes, and I'm just proud of all the work that you...
We're going to cut you off.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Zork.
Again, for all, during the superintendent search, there's a great deal of concern from parents and community regarding exceptional student education. What is your opinion of our school's, school district's policy towards exceptional student education? And what changes would you like to see? Mrs. Barefoot, or Mr. Barefoot, you will be first.
Thank you. It's really important. I mentioned earlier, I'm on the board of a public high school in Vermont. It's an 800-student high school. We have 34 special education teachers. We spend a lot of money to make sure that those students who fall into that category have the best opportunity to not only develop their academics and their intellectual skills, but their social skills, maybe more important, the social skills. Giving parents who have children, I know it can be expensive, because you need a lot of staff, and we have, as I said, 27 schools. It's virtually impossible to put the right kind of teachers in every school, but we have to find a way, I believe, based on what I know from conversations in the community, we have to find a way to give parents of ESE students more choice. And if we give them more choice, that means we have to have more instructors, we have to have more environments that are conducive to developing the whole child, not limiting their growth as people, not limiting their intellect, as I said earlier, their intellectual growth, but their social growths. And I would argue, at young ages, that social growths that feel feeling comfortable, it might be different, but we're all different. And I think that this ought to be, and I don't know the statistics, I don't know the numbers, I don't know how many students would be categorized as ESE students, but I think we need to figure out a way to make sure that people, those young people, those young boys, those young girls, have every opportunity and are put in an environment where they can grow and develop the self-esteem and the self-confidence.
Thank you.
Mrs. Zork, you would be next.
Thank you, Jennifer. That question is very relevant to today, because one area that we do know that we've been lagging behind is the supports that we need to provide for ESE students. And finally, we have the leadership in place that has recognized that also. Dr. Moore, with his first 90 days, he had hosted town hall meetings, and among the town hall meetings, most of the concerns that he heard from were our ESE parents. So within his first 90 days, he really went to work in this area, and he is restructuring and reorganizing that entire department that has lagged behind for so many years and not serving. Because in school district, we always say all students, but unfortunately, this was a group of students that were not being fully served. So with Dr. Moore, we have a new structure that's actually coming out on Tuesday, organizational plan. It's very exciting, because it's very student-focused. He's identified different positions that we need to create. He's identified positions that aren't as needed as was predicted. And one key element to ESE, though, something that I've noticed over the last few years on the board, is we will identify needs, but then we wouldn't have the money and the budget to address the needs. So we, as a board member, we need to make sure that we have those funds set aside, that if we identify those needs, that we can pull those funds out to serve those students that we need to be serving. So that is an area that we're working on, and going forward, it will not look the same coming up in the new year.
Thank you, Mrs. Zork. Dr. Jones?
I had the pleasure of attending the ESE parent advisory meetings, I think there were just two, and one of the reasons I attended it, I just wanted to hear from the parents. And there was a lot of concern there with their students and their children, stating that they wanted to feel more included, they felt like outcasts at times, and they just didn't feel the general needs were being met. When I was principal of Gifford Middle School, I had the honor of the ESE director calling me and asked me to take the first autistic class for middle schools, and that was in the 90s. And it was something that I learned very, very much from, from the teachers, from the parents, and from the students. And then I had the joy of bringing them with me when I became principal of Sebastian River High School. And one thing that our ESE teachers would always do with our student assemblies, when we met with faculty, it just talked to our students to make sure they were aware of some of their behavior and what we could do to include them. And it was a learning experience for everyone. I understand, looking at 504s and the IEPs, I guess there was an ESE boot camp, just a little bit of goal for administrators, that is crucial, that is the law, that is legal, when you look at 504s and IEPs. And when we have that information, we also have to do our best to support the teacher, whether it's a co-teaching or a facilitative teacher coming in to help the main teacher, just to make all of these things work. It seems like our transportation funding and our ESE funding have always fallen short from the state, and that's something we need to look at. I think with this area, too, I always am looking for more local control when we have some of these things come to us, because I think it's important for our students and our parents. But it is our job as educators to make sure that we give the best education possible to every student in this county.
Thank you, Dr. Jones.
Question number six. The COVID-19 crisis has presented challenges in the past school year, and will continue to pose challenges to the upcoming school year. What steps do you feel our school board must undertake to ensure the safety of all of our students and employees returning to school in the fall? I would like to ask Mrs. Zork if you have a response.
Thank you, Mike, for that question. As you know, with working with support staff, that we're busy behind the scenes trying to get our schools ready for the August 10th opening. A part of that is making sure that our schools are clean, our students are ready to come on board, because we're going to have to maintain that social distancing when we come into the new year. One area that I think is going to be very helpful is Governor DeSantis had announced last week that we are actually going to be receiving CARE Act funds in order to help overcome some of the expenses that it's going to cost us, because it's going to be quite expensive in some of these areas. When we come back to school, and our students won't be setting, we'll have to have social distancing on our bus, and we'll have to have social distancing in the cafeteria, and you know, after school, we'll have to have social distancing. So we're currently working on trying to formulate what our needs are going to be, and then what will those costs look like. And in doing so, we're really looking forward to opening up this new, the school year, because we know that the best learning environment for our students and the most productive learning environment is to have those students in front of their teachers. So that's our goal. Right now, we're formulating those plans, and it, but with our leadership that we have in place, I'm very confident that it's going to be a great opening.
Thank you, Mrs. Zork. Dr. Jones, how would you like to respond?
Before we got on today, I looked a little bit at the Florida School Board Association and saw some information from the Florida educators. And then I was on that Code of Conduct call earlier with Dr. Moore, and obviously, he said there'll be some kind of staggering start. You know, whatever it is we're going to do, it's the new normal. How are we going to make this work? Will we have the funding to keep all of our schools clean? Will we have the funding to make sure we have sanitizing stations? You know, I'm going to think as a principal right now, social distancing at the high school for lunch, that could probably be six lunch periods. probably be six, six lunch periods. At a middle school, it might be four. I mean, these are the kind of day-to-day things we have to look at now to make sure our administrators and our teachers are ready for our students to come in. It just doesn't happen overnight. One of the things Mr. Murray talked about when we were meeting that night is they are not funded appropriately for custodians. And I know that's one of our legislative priorities to make sure our facilities have the number of people they need to keep them clean. So that's something we're going to have to look at also. I'm not sure how much funding Governor DeSantis is sending each district, but whatever it is, the plans have to start now because, you know, when you're looking at this from a leadership point as a principal at a large high school or a large middle school, a lot of work that will change schedules, that will change classes, exchange of classes. So we've got to move on it now and everybody's got to be talking about it now.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Jones. Mr. Barefoot, how would you like to respond to that question?
Well, fortunately, being a trustee, which is what we call it, of this high school in Vermont and on the committee that is working remotely, trying to make sure that all of the options are accounted for in anticipation of almost anything. And also frankly, I speak weekly with the current president of Babson because we're just good colleagues. I think everybody, everything what everybody said is, 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 is got to be done. It's sanitation, it's figuring out social distancing. And here's, here's the real challenge. You know, I feel badly, I've got, you know, five, five grandchildren that would be relevant to, they love being with their friends. You know, high school kids hug each other. You know, the social dislocation that this has caused in many quarters is a big, as big a problem as the academic achievement gap has been exacerbated because not everybody is capable or has the attention span to learn online. So yes, we want clean and sanitation and we want six feet separation and we need, but one of the things that will make that work is if we can figure out how, in, in, in the world of co-curricular activities, theater, music, athletics, if we can figure out how, how to give the kids who enjoy those kinds of activities, the opportunity to aggregate and socialize and yet be safe. And of course, kids think they're going to live forever and they can't get sick and they just don't know. It, it's a challenge, but all I know is that you try and anticipate every possible scenario. You'll probably forget something, something will happen, it always does. But I think that the, the, the district, and frankly, from what I know, I have two grandkids in the New York City schools.
All right, Mr. Barefoot, we're going to have to cut you off.
Thank you, Mr. Barefoot.
So we're going to move on to the individual questions. I'm going to start with Dr. Jones. In your 31 years in the district, you have developed many close relationships with individuals who work for the district. How will you perform your responsibilities as a school board member, particularly in relationship to discipline, disciplinary actions, negotiations, policy implementation, when it conflicts with those relationships?
Well, you can ask anybody who I work for. My commitment to the school district, whether I was a dean, a teacher, a principal, or whatever, obviously you want to build relationships, but that doesn't stop me from doing the right thing. One of the hardest things I ever had to do was recommend dismissal of anyone, whether it be a teacher, a custodian, cafeteria worker, whatever it may be. But the only reason I could sleep at night is because it was the right thing to do for students. It is something as far as relationship, knowing people, that's, that's a given. I've been here for a great number of years, but if you ask anyone, that will not deter me from making the decision that is right for students or the school district. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Jones.
Mr. Barefoot, you have expressed your extensive experience in the management of various school programs. In recent years, and particularly over the distance learning period, we have noticed a significant change in our student body in regards to discipline, prior knowledge, and mental health readiness. How does your past experience address these ever-changing students we face each day?
Well, just about the time you've got to figure it out, it's going to change again. You know, long-term anymore seems to be, I won't say month to month, although in the current environment, it's certainly true. Distance learning, fortunately or unfortunately, back in the, when I became president of Babson, we, we had one of the first online MBA programs. And at the time, there were very few platforms in which you could deliver content. And the challenge was getting teachers that were comfortable teaching online, dynamic in the classroom, great face-to-face with students, and over time, you know, get comfortable. I think the job, or what I'm told the job our teachers have done in this environment has been terrific. But if there's one thing that I have heard, and you know, who knows whether it's true, I suspect it is, and, and one of the causes of the turnover with some of our younger teachers in some of our schools is a discipline problem or bullying. And, and a lot of this comes from these kids' home life. Who knows what goes on in the home? And they come to school and they're frustrated or they're not, they, they don't get any recognition at home, or they don't get any praise, and they, they act up and they try and get attention by doing things that are bad. They pick on other kids. It, it begins, their mental health has been affected. All you can really do is hope that your teachers identify kids that they believe has an issue and that you have in the schools. And I believe there are currently, I think, four clinicians that rotate around, but I believe, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, that there are plans to put a guidance counselor or a health counselor in each of the schools or most of the schools.
Mrs. Barefoot. Mrs. Zork, the school board meetings have frequently extended beyond two and three hours when there were relatively few action items. What steps would you take to make the meetings more concise, to facilitate the business of the district while respecting the time commitment of staff, stakeholders, audience members, and the community?
That is a very good question. That is something I've been working on as the, the board chair. It's really going to take a team effort to make that happen. We have to be very respectful of the individual times that is there. One thing that, as a, am I, am I, can you hear me?
Yeah, we're listening.
I'm sorry. One thing that I, I had suggested back last year when we had our three new school board members start is we need to go to the daytime discussion sessions because we were really going into the, the evening with the first few of our meetings that we have with the new school board members. So we, we went to that during that time. But one thing I think that's been very helpful for us board members over the last several months is Dr. Moore has, and I keep bringing up Dr. Moore because it's just light years ahead of where we've been, and it's just a refreshing experience that I've had as a board member over the last few months. He has actually, every Friday, he'll have a meeting with board members and he will bring in staff and he will go through each and every item that's going to be on that agenda so that we can really dive into the details and ask all our questions ahead of time with the staff members versus getting to the board maybe meetings and, and having a long drawn out discussions and asking these questions that we could have gotten answered ahead of time. So I think Dr. Moore, having him have that for us behind the scenes has been very helpful. And I think as we go forward, we, we're more of a, we're becoming more of a seasoned school board. And I think that the conversations are getting shorter on the dais because we, we understand the issue.
Okay. Thank you, candidates. Now, we each have the opportunity to share some closing remarks. We have a three-minute time limit for each candidate. And Mr. Barefoot, we'd like you to begin.
Well, I look forward to the opportunity. One of the benefits of, of being a little older and having served in a lot of different environments, you've seen a lot of different things. You see how good functioning boards, whether it's a public company, a private company, in this case, a, a school board, it's really a team. And there's a book written by a fellow by name of William Lencioni, and it's The Five Dysfunctions of a Team. And it's, if you haven't read it, you ought to. And the first, the number one reason for dysfunctional teams is lack of trust. And one of the challenges is, is with the sunshine laws, you really can't sit down and collaborate. Over lunch, I mean, having been mayor of Indian River Shores, it's really a pain in the butt, to be perfectly honest, because so much more could be accomplished. Of course, then the press wouldn't have anything to write about, so they're never going to let that happen. But I think you have to develop trust in your colleagues. You can't be an expert on everything. And perhaps my background and experience on certain things, let's say I've had extensive experience chairing audit committees of both public companies, private companies, the hospital, et cetera. Well, maybe if there's an issue raised that's, that's balance sheet or income statement related, maybe my colleagues would defer to me because they trust my judgment. On the other hand, I, it's almost certain that, that if I'm elected, the other four colleagues on the board are going to know more about the inner workings of what's going on in the school, in the classrooms. And if Dr. Jones or Mrs. Zork or Carrie Bornberg or Mara Schiff have a point of view and I trust them, and I trust their judgment until they give me reasons not to, I'll support them. So I, I'm a big believer in, in boards that are made up, that are teams. It's great to have debate. It's important to reach consensus. At some point in time, you're just going to have to trust your colleague. So I hope that if I'm fortunate enough to be elected, I can add value, respect the opinions of my colleagues, work well with the staff, perhaps given my experience, I can be helpful to Dr. Moore. I've had experience in trying to recruit, for example, teachers of color. I was fairly successful at it, obviously with a lot of help from the academic leadership in the college. And I think it's going to be fun. And I don't view these as challenges, I view them as opportunities. And you know, if you look at Indian River County, look at the, the change in attitude of the people that live here, when Cleveland Clinic's name went up on that hospital, it was almost instantaneous. And yeah, they brought in a few new people initially, but right away, the confidence level went up and it was showed in the visits. I'd like to see Indian River County School District have the same opinion of it in the future.
Thank you, Mr. Barefoot. Mrs. Zork, I'd like to offer you three minutes for your closing remarks. You have to unmute.
My husband likes that mute button. He can just turn me off. I, I just want to thank all the, the teachers and the employees and our support staff for the opportunity to serve as your school board member since 2016. It's truly been an honor. I've taken that job very serious. I've, I've stood up for each, for individuals when others weren't willing to stand up for you. I've showed you that I will always do what I think is right. I, I've showed you that I'm tough on accountability when it comes to mismanagement and nonsense. I was tough on that. I will continue to be tough on that. I, I'm very fond of our new superintendent, but I have high expectations for him and he knows that. And I, I will hold him accountable to all these promises and these plans that he has put before us to make sure that we achieve the, the goals that the board has put in place through a strategic plan. I will, one thing that I feel that my strength is, besides being, being a mom, is my background is operations management and it's also, I'm very strong on budgets. So, and just like what Mr. Barefoot said, we need to, the board needs to be comprised of a balance in order to be able to be a functioning board going forward. We have three great educators on our board and I value their input and I, I take their input very seriously, but we're facing some issues with our budget coming up in the 21, 22 school year. That is an area of my strength of being able to find deficiencies and being able to cut those redundancies so that we can make sure that every dollar that we have goes into the classrooms and also helps with our paying our employees a fair wage. You know, it's just really been an honor to be able to serve you. I have an open door policy. If anyone has any questions, I invite you, not the district, to come and talk about my campaign, but you can visit me at LauraZork.com and reach out to me. And I'd be more than happy to share and answer any other questions that you have.
Thank you, Mrs. Zork. Dr. Jones, I would like to offer you three minutes.
Thank you again for this opportunity. I agree with Mr. Barefoot. This has been fun. It's been a great open dialogue. And I'm going to close with a story. The other day, excuse me, I was on my walking path and I had my school board shirt on and someone said, are you Peggy Jones? I said, yes, ma'am. And she said, well, why are you running for school board? And I started to go on all the information about my background, what I love about this community and the district and my knowledge base. And then I started thinking, you know what? I know this community. I've worked with parents from South Vero to Vero to Gifford to Felsmer to Wabashlo into Sebastian. I know the pockets of our community and I know what they need. In my visits, I hit every one of those areas. Now, I understand as a school board member, the role and responsibility. The superintendent has the day-to-day run of the district, the principal, the day-to-day run of the school, teachers, the day-to-day run of the classroom. And everyone together will support our students for that desired outcome of a productive citizen. When I met with Ms. Cannon, and that's before I had the group meeting, it was canceled, I said, what are your top three concerns do you think that are there for teachers? And she said, job security, discipline, and of course finances. And I, I thought about that. And then, of course, what I said earlier with Mike, he talked about feeling together, being part of a team, the CWA with everyone else. And we all know together, we'll make this work for our students. But how do we get to that desired outcome? We get there by hiring and retaining great teachers. We get there, we get there by putting administrators where they can flourish. We get there with the district pullness all together so we can be a team. And our parents, and our community, and our community liaison supporting us. The superintendent and the school board set the tone for the district. That is where I want to go with this. I think there needs to be a tone set as we move into these challenging times. I think there needs to be a tone set as we move into COVID and welcoming our black students back where they feel safe. And I want to be part of that team. I have always done my best to serve this community in many, many areas. Educators know a lot about budget too, and I think we can all come together and make this work for our kids. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Jones. I'd like to thank you all, candidates, for being with us today. And remember that the school board election will be held August 18th. And we hope that this forum has provided our members and the general public with a better understanding of the candidates. This video will be accessible on Facebook and on our websites, both IRCEA and CWA. And the, on behalf of Jennifer Freeland and myself, the CWA, IRCEA, we thank you for joining with us today.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.